All right, good evening. It's after 7 o'clock. It's October 7th. This is our regularly scheduled council meeting. It's running a little behind due to our committee meeting previously. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and will end is live streamed on YouTube. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, October 21st, 2024. Ms. Hamilton, will you please call the roll of those that are here?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey. Ms. Knappick.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Wharton.
Here.
Mr. Husey had contacted me previously and that he was going to be unable to attend this evening. We have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. And with that, I'll ask you to stand with council members in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have an approval of the previous committee, uh, meeting minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As promised, my comments tonight are going to be very brief because I've spent most of the time since our last meeting eating my way through Eastern Europe and have come back amazingly not any heavier than I left, which was given what I ate is quite an accomplishment. Great trip, great to be back. Again, I think by about 10 days in, I was getting almost homesick because I was tired and ready to see Worcester and looks great to be back. Sorry I missed on Worcester Fest and some, we finally got some rain. But again, good to be back. Not much in the way of updates. I saw Joel's memo from Friday. It was pretty comprehensive. I think just a couple of things that I picked up in really some emails that I think he left off is we did get word from Norfolk Southern that they are going to do some, be doing some improvements. And I know that I've gotten complaints about some of the intersections they're talking about and I assume you have as council members too, so I thought you'd be pleased to hear this as well as I. So I guess they're going to start with the Palmer Street and Nolda Avenue intersection, then move to the East Bowman Artiflex Crossing, then finally the East Liberty Pittsburgh Avenue. So I don't have a timeframe for those when that's going to happen, but it is in the works. And again, I took that as good news and I think you should as well. The other thing, and this was just in a conversation today with Joel, is that, you know, in the spring, this pursuant to council action, we did a bunch of economic development grants throughout the city. And a lot of those projects are underway and I'll just give it over to Joel.
Those, let's fill them up. The tax grants that were awarded and progressing along.
Yeah, so the Ohio Light Opera has finished with all of their improvements that they were going to do. If you've driven by the fairgrounds, they have completed their fence. Phase three of their total fence repair, there's four phases. We funded them for phase three. The Lyric had the installation for the HVAC unit, so three of the four have completed their work. We're waiting on them to submit invoices and verification. And then we have word back from the Wayne Center for the Arts. They're waiting on funding to come through from the state and they will begin in January. So three of the four are pretty much wrapped up and the fourth one is we have a target date on when they're going to start. So.
Excellent. Then looking to tonight's agenda, we have just five new items. Items one, two, four, and five are budgeted. Item three is not. This is on first reading and would require three readings, but we would ask that you should consider suspending the rules and trying to enact that tonight. Mr. Abernathy, I'm sure will give a further explanation on that. And also item five, that's one we would also consider that council, ask that council consider enacting tonight because there's a large lead time involved with those items and it'd be best to get those in process now. And again, Mr. Malta, we'll talk more on that when that comes forward. Otherwise, I have nothing further to report and again, glad to be back. We'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have no petitions this evening and we have, the only people that signed up to communicate is items that would be on our miscellaneous portion of the meeting, which will be a little later. So at this point, we'll move into committee reports, which at this point, we've only had one recently and that was with Ms. Knappick.
Yes, thank you. Before today's meeting, we had a laws and ordinances committee meeting regarding a, what to do in Worcester with, about marijuana dispensaries and Mr. Husey was able to weigh in by email to me today. We had a pretty good discussion. I think we're moving along to a consensus. We have until the end of the year to draft legislation because our current, current moratorium goes until the end of December. And then I think at that point, we've got to, well, prior to that point, we've got to make a decision, but we've got to pass legislation by then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings, so we'll move right into unfinished business. But before that, Mr. Gaffey has again alerted me that he will be recusing himself from the discussion and voting on this particular topic. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read Resolution 2024-64, please.
Resolution number 2024-64, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing projects.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Okay, we're at third reading. So gone over it two separate times. Anybody have any additional questions, comments? All right, then I'm going to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, please call, well, no, I guess we don't need to. Yes, please call the. Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
You'll get it, Amy, you'll get it.
He's upset about the guardians, I don't blame him.
I finished.
Okay.
It was a mess, but I finished.
My apologies.
It passed.
All right, very good. All right, we'll move on to new business. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read Resolution 2024-79 for us, please.
Resolution number 2024-79, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase Flock cameras, including installation and yearly subscription for use by the police department and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Gaffey, the floor is yours.
All right, yeah, this is a not to exceed item on the budget and this is for Flock license plate reader cameras. There's no facial recognition, there's no radar on these to grab people speeding or anything like that. They're really designed to capture license plates and share them with other agencies across the state that also capture license plates using these cameras, I believe. Where this would come into play would be if there's an Amber Alert and a license plate number goes out, those cameras are capturing plates and that'll pop up in the database thereby making it easier to, for law enforcement to enact on, on something like that if it pops up in the system. If anybody has any questions, I believe Chief Fisher's here and there's also a representative from Flock here as well.
Any questions?
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So I know that these are, Chief Fisher, you've explained that these have been instrumental in helping find, you know, in the one case, it was a stolen vehicle with a child inside of it. I'm curious, are these also able to be used for like silver alerts, you know, missing elderly drivers, things like that? Okay.
So with me Sergeant Schon from our place, he's actually used the system before, so he's got some firsthand knowledge of it and Rick and Barbara with Flock Safety. Just invited him here to answer questions. I may not be able to, but absolutely, I think for a silver alert, whether it's an Amber Alert theft, any type of crime, you would have a plate vehicle description, you can put in that system and see where it's hit the camera. Flock is a little bit different than, for example, the system Orville uses. Many of us are familiar with that. The system Orville uses is a closed system, so only Orville has access to that data. Flock is a little bit different from them and we did look at that system. Flock is a little bit different than them in that there's over 350 agencies in Ohio that have this system. And when you sign up, as long as you allow access, you have access to all those other cameras. So it's possible, you may have seen there was a couple of weeks ago, an eight-year-old took a vehicle and drove into Target. That's how they tracked her. They were able to follow her through those cameras, so that vehicle.
Is a good sale.
So same thing, we would have an incident here, we could track it to Wadsworth, Medine, Lodi, Brunswick, all those entities have this same system. Right now, I think there's only, Rick said there's only one entity in Ohio that isn't sharing that data. But it's, that's part of what makes this system different than that closed loop system.
How many cameras are we talking about?
Seventeen.
It looks like seventeen.
Yep.
And I'm not asking you to disclose exact locations, but do, I mean, are you, these are going to be on major highways?
Most of these cameras, we actually, listen, this is what Flock does every day, right? So we ask that, may I look at our city, where do you think is the best placement of these? There's a couple we might need to talk about. Part of it is because I think they might be outside the city limits.
Probably shouldn't do that.
But mainly, most of these, we're covering the ins, the access points of the city. Where are you coming in and where are you leaving the city of Worcester from? But again, that's kind of the start with this. If we get these up and running and we're having great success, then do we look to maybe get a couple downtown, some other spots? Now, the College of Worcester has someone on Bell Avenue. I called them and said, hey, would you allow us access? That was several weeks ago. I haven't had a response yet.
I'm sure the mayor will take care of that.
There's also, you may have seen them, there's several of these cameras that Lowe's pays for outside of Lowe's at their entrances, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Will Lowe's share? Or is that?
Are they in Flock?
Lowe's does, Lowe's does share after the fact. They don't allow police to.
Real time.
Hot pill alerts to say they've stolen a vehicle or, but they do a lot of sharing on the back end. If they're looking for a vehicle, they do get access to all of those cameras.
And what about Walmart?
We do not have Walmart.
Okay.
Does the college share theirs?
If we ask.
Depends, depends is the right answer.
I think that's something we should work on. I understand.
My only comment is it seems like a pretty good value for what we're going to be getting. That's not, not a very, I thought they were going to be considerably more costly. I was very impressed that, that we're able to do this for as little cost as it is. I fully recommend doing it. I think I've mentioned to you, wish we'd done it even before now, but yeah.
Listen, for me, this is the stepping off point. Let's get these up, let's see how they work, what kind of success we have. And then as we look in the future to add one here, there, you know, we think there's a deficiency, something like that. I think it's worth looking at. Part of the price difference with these, quite frankly, between the other system is that sharing, right? You're multiplying your ability to see throughout the state versus that closed loop system is a little less expensive, but you only get this little tiny snapshot, right?
Well, I think our citizens, once we've had them for a while, realize they're not getting traffic tickets because of them will understand that we really are not putting them in place for monitoring traffic laws. It's not what it's for, so.
Neither of us want those headaches, excuse me.
Exactly. So we'll prove, we'll prove that we're not doing that and then we can expand if we see that we could use it. So thank you for all the research and help that you guys have provided. Any further questions? Okay, then.
Mr. Gaffey, motion?
I would motion that we move forward with this legislation.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Gaffey, second by Mr. Meyer. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, ordinance 2024-25. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-25, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, floor is yours.
All right, looks like we had budgeted for some healthcare costs, set aside a certain, or appropriate a certain amount. Looks like we may have had a little bit of a shortfall. Am I saying that right, Andre?
I actually didn't budget properly, so I left out the 10% of the employees' pay.
Okay, so we, we got to dig into the funds and.
Yeah, I mean, the money's, the cash is there. I just didn't put, I didn't put the correct appropriate, appropriate amount. So the actual money is there. It just needs your authorization or your appropriation.
All right, so.
Two times now, last year, if you probably don't remember, that's the second time. But I figured it out. I went and mapped out the problem. I said, this isn't going to happen again and that's what happened.
I felt like I was having deja vu.
So was I. When I was looking at the budget, I'm like, this is going to be short, there's no way.
So we can't chalk, we can't chalk that up to old age?
I will.
So this does say full amount budgeted, so I'm just going to move to motion to adopt.
I think we need to suspend the rules. You don't? I thought that was.
You guys have got this written as a three, three piece? So.
Unless somebody filled out the paperwork wrong.
We never did. I'm sorry, I thought he said that number three and number five.
That just says full amount budgeted, that's why, what I'm going off of.
I didn't, I don't know, somebody, somebody put the little X there. Mine are those little dark lines.
I'm going off of what the paperwork tells me.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
All right, then I will motion to suspend the rules.
And I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Abernathy, motions to suspend the rules. Ms. Knappick, seconds. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the, on the motion.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And before we get into the next one, I guess I'll ask the question now, so we don't look like we're completely ill-prepared since this one also says three readings. Assuming that's also the case?
The same, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Hamilton, when you're ready, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-26, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, looks like we have an estimated amount of $50,000 to go towards a transportation manager to be reimbursed through a grant. So it looks like it's one of those, go hire them first and then we'll give you the money. So am I reading that right, Andre? That's what I thought. I didn't think I messed that one up, so.
It's a quarterly reimbursement and if anybody's interested in that, they'll go over reimburse it by the quarter.
Okay. So in order to get the money, we got to go spend it first. So anything you want to add to that?
That's pretty much it.
Well, thank you for giving me some pretty easy ones tonight. So any questions?
Joel.
Just to say, we will have Mr. Kevin White, who was hired for that position, he'll be here for the next council meeting.
Good deal.
He's familiar, he's from Worcester and he's here several years ago. Worked, just getting creative for a while and back.
Good deal. My only question, I know Mr. White and these are wonderful person. I'm glad to get him back to the city. He's a great young man, but I think $50,000 for the month of October is a little steep. The ordinance says that this is to pay him for the month of October and I just think $50,000 a month is probably more than. Somebody, somebody write that up a little wrong? Yeah.
Did it say for or in the month?
To pay the transportation manager in October. Anyway, I realize that's not what that meant.
Paying in October, not for October.
I'm just kidding, it just seemed like a, I thought, well, that's a lot.
How come I didn't apply for that job?
Thinking this.
And if it's quarterly, that's still $200,000 a year. I'm in financial services, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know how to read the. Yeah, anyway, I, I, that wasn't a question. We can move, you can move on, Mr. Abernathy. I was just making a comment. And I'd like to welcome Mr. White to, back to Worcester. All right, I'm going to motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, second by Mr. Malta. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll on the.
Mr. Sanders, if I could just interject to address Mr. Malta.
Sure.
I know he was somewhat in jest.
Oh, yeah, I'm joking.
But the point of the question is that, you know, this is a transfer of funds to an account that will be used to pay him and $50,000 is that amount that's going to be transferred to that line item. But he has just started working last week, so that he will be paid out of that fund.
Because it's going to get reimbursed by the grant. I, I know, I know.
Exactly, but that's a, just a transfer of funds into a line item out of which is payable to him.
And in case he's watching tonight, we want to make sure he knows he's not getting paid $50,000.
Correct.
For October.
I don't want anybody to be confused by that, including Mr. White.
Can I move this session along?
Well, at this point, I think we have a motion and a second. We're just waiting on Ms. Hamilton to call the roll.
I was waiting for my cue.
That's right, so there you go.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance is adopted. Next resolution, 2024-80 will also be Mr. Abernathy. And with that, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read it to us first, please.
Resolution number 2024-80, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to issue payment for services rendered prior to the fiscal officer's certification of availability of funds and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, looks like we have three purchase orders we need to approve for Mr. Dordia here. So, Mr. Dordia, you want to tell us what we're, what we're looking at here?
Yes, so occasionally, doesn't have to do often, but state law says that obviously if you're going to purchase a good or service, it has to have a certification by the finance officer of the municipality that the money is available. At that point, what we do is we number the funds and set them aside. So occasionally, sometimes it happens, I think in one of these cases, there was a PO that was open, but it wasn't enough. It was like 800, we do what's called blanket POs and so, and I believe somebody was on vacation on that instance. Second one, one of those, well, they had a couple POs open for the vendor, but it wasn't for that purpose. In other words, for a different purpose and I don't recall the, oh, I think, yeah, I'm sorry, the third one was somebody was on vacation, but the janitor was one. And Willow Brick was, there's a couple POs open, but they didn't get the right one in there. And so anyway, that happens occasionally, but not too often. And the nice thing about this is obviously it comes accountable to your approval. It's called a then and how it was able to pull then and it is now, nothing. So, and that too helps us often get our excellence in reporting from our state. And it gives another level of assurance that we take these things seriously. We don't just, we don't just ignore them. You know what I mean? It's a compliance law, but it shows that as well. So it's part of the control procedure we have in place and it shows that the control procedure are actually working.
And these are things that are audited, so we need to make sure we're doing it right.
I think, like I said, I mean, very frequently, it happens, it happens one to, I don't know, four times a year, I think. Or actually zero to four times. But it's just unusual that, that it happened, it was boom, one, and then boom, two. And then remember, Amy, Amy said, we have one more. So anyway. But the money was available. It's just a procedural thing. In other words, somebody called, said, hey, we need whatever this is. So they said, okay, hey, we need whatever this is. They ordered it and they may have forgotten to get the PO in. Or like I said, one case, somebody was on vacation, didn't get the PO in until they were after the fact, but.
Well, in the case of the Sixmo, they do the plan, the building plan review. So at this point, I mean, I'm sure there's probably a PO written for them. And at that point, that dollar amount varies depending on how many of those that the depart, building department sends to them for plan review.
And that was the, that was the PO, that the amount that wasn't enough in the payable PO, exactly.
So.
And so in, in the grand scheme of things, Sixmo was 5,700, Willow Brick was 3,877, and the Janitorial was 3,044. So we're, we're not talking huge POs here, so.
And I'd also say, you know, they're normal lawful purchases of the city. It just didn't get entered appropriate, they're actually on time. That's part of the lines laws we have, so that people don't go out and spend money that's not there.
Okay. Any additional questions from council? All right, I'm going to motion to suspend rules. I'm reading it again, it says it's not budgeted, so.
Oh, it is.
Now, this one says it is budgeted and this one does say that we don't need to suspend the rules on this one.
Well, we're just whiffing on every single one right now, so. Okay, we'll just go ahead and motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, motion to adopt, seconded by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, you call the roll on the adoption, please.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
All right. So our last item of unfinished business this evening is will be with Mr. Malta. But before that, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read it for us, please.
Resolution number 2024-81, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for utility preventative maintenance and repair items for utility infrastructure and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Corin May is a company similar to Granger Supply, which I think everybody knows that name. And this is, you know, any necessary inventory as far as valves, plumbing, that type of supply house. They're going to run, they're going to exceed $50,000 limit, so that's why it's brought here tonight. I think we talked about this in the past, moving these up to 75 because of inflation and what we're seeing. Sorry, my mic is not on. So that's where we're at. Cost of repairs and materials have increased and it's necessary to maintain the inventory to keep the city, one, the water moving and got to go to the other side too, sure. So that's why we're asking to pass this tonight.
Any questions?
Any questions? I talked to Mr. Fritz today for quite a while, so I told him I didn't think it was necessary for him to be here for this.
No. So just out of curiosity, I know we had great discussions last fall related to this topic. And so just out of curiosity, you know how many times we've done this so far this year? Is this the fourth or fifth time that we've had to increase?
More than that.
Is it? Okay.
There are more than a dozen of them, I couldn't get a list of them.
Yeah.
A dozen? Okay. But in any event, to the point, it's been a number of times, so at this point, yeah, just, again, going back to the discussion that we had, and I'll admit I was on the opposite side of that discussion, but at this point, clearly, this is going to continue to happen, so. So with that, Mr. Malta, you have a motion for us?
I, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
All right. We adopted Resolution 2024-81. We will proceed into our miscellaneous section, which at this point, we have three people that have signed up to speak, two roundabouts, and one marijuana. And at this point, did we need a microphone on the podium?
We'll just turn on someone.
Okay. All right, so.
You won't need one for me.
All right, well, Mr. Barnett, you want to start us off, please?
Thank you, God. I'm back again, David Barnett, corner of Burbank, and old man, concerned about the roundabout. I told you the three reasons before, safety concern for pedestrians, safety concern for our fire and EMS squad to get around this roundabout when traffic is stopped there. They have issues coming down, down by the colls, because it isn't wide enough. Third of all, it's going to be total chaos at the beginning of school and then through to school. It's going to be worse than they ever thought it would be now. When I bought this house three and a half years ago, people said, you're crazy, it's too busy out there. I said, they've got a traffic light, people let you in and out. They're going to take away that traffic light, and they're going to put that roundabout right in front of my driveway where I have to pull out. How would you like that in front of your house? How would you? You wouldn't. I said I wasn't going to get mad, but I am mad. You know what you'll do to my property value, put this roundabout there, and nobody will be able to get in and out of that driveway of my home? It's going to ruin that property value, and you know it as well as I do. Excuse my anger, I'm sorry about that. My children, my freedom, my freedom.
How far along in the process are we with this roundabout?
You have approved the contract for design, so we're in the middle of the design for the project. We've looked at it for quite a few years, due to the traffic that's been there, the backup, and actually because of some of the safety issues with the traffic. So we, it's been on the books, and you've probably seen it on the 10-year plan, it's been a few years now.
Have we funded it?
So the TIF, not specifically, but the TIF would pay for it, this would be one of the TIF-funded projects.
The project hasn't been approved either.
No, no, just, oh, yeah, it was designed. It's not, it's designed, which will actually improve pedestrian safety, improve traffic flow, and it's not unusual for the geometry and the location of the roundabout in relation to a driveway that this is, it's not unusual, very common, and, and fire trucks were actually used in the design, out of the design criteria for it, that is what we're designing for.
I don't think I've ever seen a roundabout back up to a driveway, or a roundabout on a driveway.
There's several driveways that are pretty, are closer than I've ever seen to this, I mean, at least in Worcester.
And the other concern I have is just simply, some of the things that were brought up is the, and I'm sure I'll hit this in the design phase of things, but safety of kids walking to and from school, the soccer players at the soccer fields, the bike riders and the runners, I'll be interested, I'll be watching very closely to see what the design people do about that, because that's, that's huge.
This is, this is going to be different from all the other roundabouts we've done, because.
Isn't it, isn't it two back-to-back in peanut shape?
And, but the other roundabouts we've done haven't had this much residential on it, with, as far as like driveways.
For the city of Worcester, no, but in the state, if you go anywhere around the Silver Forest, they've got quite a bit more.
We're not Columbus, though, and our residents are not used to something like that, so that, obviously, you can see the shock on, on his face and his emotion on that, so I think we need to keep that in mind.
Absolutely. I also know that this is always a challenge, you know, you want to, you want to respond to the individual and be a good customer service representative, at the same time, we also have to look at, and we always do, the, into the community, you know, the community steward piece, and all the other 8,400 vehicles we drive through there every day. So, one thing to look at if you're looking at pedestrian and bike, is go over and look at the one on the other end, at Holden and Oak Hill, and you'll see how we've incorporated the, the bike and sidewalks that through there, and how safe that is, and how that can function.
Can the bus get around it?
It's a little intense.
Yeah, that's why you see that slightly raised area in the middle.
So they drive on the curb?
Yeah, so.
So they can't get around it without driving in the curb?
No, no, absolutely.
So bump up on the curb, bump off the curb?
No, not true. When you use the curb is when, in case where so, if there, if for some reason there were blockages of traffic, or it wasn't moving fast enough for a bus or for a fire truck, then you have that additional width that you can get through there and drive through. If you notice, we actually had this issue with the Old Man Hill one, the winter time, when there was just a little bit of snow, the curb is so low that people just drove sort of right over that at times, you know, visually you see it very easily, but not snow, but when there's a little bit of snow, you couldn't see it, it was pretty easy to drive. If you look at the track, people were sort of driving over that.
Of course, if it plowed snow, it'd probably have been easier to see the curb.
And all the, all those fire trucks can get around it without driving over the edge?
That we use fire truck, the largest truck we have is part of the design criteria for this.
And we're based on that truck similar, if not identical, to the school bus.
Oh, yeah, actually bigger.
I, I'm just, I want to be very careful, because Mr. Barnett's not the only one I've heard from. I've heard from about seven people up in that area.
Same here.
Who are opposed to the roundabouts now. I know what it's like to sit up there in traffic, and it, it's, the beginning of the day and the end of the day, it's wicked, it's terrible, but there, and there are other times, one sec, and soccer, soccer Saturday, it's a little impossible to get around. But when we go to the design, I want the design people to be very cognizant of taking as little, designing it so we take as little property as we have to from any residents, and that we make it safe for, for the pedestrians. I mean, the last thing I want to see is that we put in a roundabout and people aren't watching and kids get hit by cars.
Right, I mean, these aren't new, you know, I mean, Ohio was sort of a late adopter, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but now I think we're number 10 in the country for round, total, we're number of roundabouts. If you go to the Federal Highway Administration, they actually list roundabouts as a safety feature. Like, if you're looking at how to make intersections safer, number one, look at doing a roundabout, both for vehicles and for pedestrians. So, that's why we're doing this, is to make it safer, to improve the level of service. I looked at this probably 15 years ago, to try, is there any way outside, this was before we had our first roundabout, how can we improve this intersection? The only way to do it was to align Winkler and Holden, and that would have required much more property to take, either from the county or from residents, which, that's why we never proceeded with that, so that's just not feasible for us to do that. And now ODOT has a roundabout-first mentality. If there's, if there's an issue with an intersection, they say, we're not even going to fund you unless you look at a roundabout first and show us that that can't be done before we'll even think about a signal.
Yeah, and I stress that to people, because I get a lot of questions, that's I'm sure we all do, of, you know, why have we jumped on this roundabout bandwagon, and that's all we want to do now, we don't want to put in signs or lights, and I always reassure them that if we want funding from outside the city, if we want state funding, if we want federal funding, that's where we have, that's the route we have to go.
Would it be possible for this to be done in less secret, behind the closed doors of the city and the planning, and shared with council and the public, the, the designs and things that are going into the planning, all these things that you're saying, that you guys are considering?
We can share it as we move forward during the design, just like any other roadway project or signal project, that we do, I mean, nothing.
Generally, you wait till it's done and then just put it to us and say, here it is, this is what we decided, so let's, I, what I'm saying is maybe a little bit more input before that time comes.
Or you just let us know when the planning commission's going to.
Well, definitely, you know, I mean, there's obviously a ton of design criteria that have to be adhered to, so.
Yeah.
Are there any models, like video models, that could be shared with the city to kind of prove your case that, that this is going to be an improvement, that this is going to be safer, that this won't be a detriment to Mr. Barnett's property value? Is there anything like that, that you, you know, the design company might be able to provide?
I mean, I can't speak to the property value, to that piece, but the entire transportation industry has known for many years this is safe, that's why FHA has adopted it as a, I can send you.
I understand a roundabout, Joel, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about this particular unique property being, you know, soccer fields, lots of kids running around, residential neighborhood, school neighborhood, very tight corners, large vehicles from our safety service center, that, I mean, those are a lot of, those are a lot of outside factors that we need to take into consideration, and so I'm just saying, I'm not saying I don't believe you that this won't be an improvement, and, and something needs to be done, because it is a disaster where, what it is now, but maybe to give some peace of mind to the folks who do live up there, and, you know, who do have these concerns, I'm just curious if there might be some sort of digital model that, that can kind of represent what would ha, what would happen if, when school buses are going through there at the rate that we know that they will be, or if there's, you know, a five-alarm fire and all the trucks have to go through, I mean, we, it wouldn't hurt, I don't think, to be able to present that.
Yeah, we'll provide as much information as we can, there's several FAQs in the rack out here, if you want, if you're on the way out, it might be helpful in answering people. Yeah, we'll provide all that, we'll provide the design criteria, you know, concepts as there, as we're progressing through that. We always try to limit the impact on the adjacent properties as much as possible when it comes to right-of-way acquisition, as much as we can. We'll do that, just like we always do.
Do they have, are they far enough along to where there's actually some preliminary type layout in terms of what they're proposing?
I'll have to double check, I mean, I've seen concepts, but I don't know that those were more than, than very, very preliminary, and, and I would like to see us be, have enough work done that I can give you some pretty, you know, specific dimensions and things like that, which, we should be pretty close to that.
I, I think I can answer a lot of these questions going on, and we do have one more resident here. I've spoke to, that's my ward, so I'm highly involved in that roundabout, and I live very close to it. So, yes, safety-wise, I understand. I'm a motorcyclist, roundabouts are the safest thing for a motorcycle, beyond me, doesn't matter, I'm not here, I'm here to serve the public. These residents are extremely upset, there were drawings sent out to all of them, I've seen them as well, they had markers in their yards, and we're going to hear more and more, and I've encouraged the residents to come here and speak to us, tell us how they feel, what they need, how this is going to, how can we make it work? So, that's why you're, everybody's getting phone calls, I want that to happen. I think our interaction with our public is extremely important, and it's our job. So with that said, I would love for you to come on up here and speak your piece.
I live directly across the street from my neighbor that was just up here. Those flags are back in my yard about 40 feet. I have a flower garden in there, and I wish that you would all come up there and look at it before you're going to tear it down.
It's nice.
I have 8,000 tulips, thousands of other plants in there that are going to be bulldozed over. My driveway is going to be moved, just at the exit of a roundabout, and if you don't think I'm going to have problems getting in and out of my driveway, there's something wrong. The only thing that allows me to get out now is the red light. That's when I know I can get out, cars are stopped, cars are never going to have to stop coming through a roundabout, I'm never going to be able to get out safely. I'm only going to be able to get in my driveway from one direction, going through the roundabout. I can't get into my driveway coming from my work, I can't come in from going to the store, I got to go all the way through a peanut shell roundabout to get in my driveway that's going to be facing this way, as I'm coming this way to get in my driveway. If this harms one person, it shouldn't be done. It's harming every resident around that circle, everybody's driveway either goes in or at an exit of this roundabout. I think it's harming people. I understand that something needs to be done with this intersection. My next-door neighbor's property has about five beautiful trees that are going to be completely gone, roundabout is going to be 20 feet out his living room window. I mean, I don't understand how you can do that kind of stuff to people, if you're harming one resident in Worcester, that's wrong. I love this town, I bought this house because of how beautiful it was, and all the trees, I have two acres of land there, and I put thousands of dollars right where they're going to bulldoze. Before you make that decision, please come out to my property and look at it, look how beautiful it is, because it ain't going to be that way until you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last person that signed up this evening is Carrie Snyder.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the thoughtful discussion that was happening earlier in the committee meeting, so it was good to be a fly on the wall for that. Just a couple thoughts quickly, so bath salts were made illegal in 2011, I had to check on it because I wasn't sure myself, so if anywhere is currently selling them, or possessing or selling at all, it's completely illegal in Ohio, so we can, we can report them and send them straight out.
They are, and in locations where children can get in.
No, I mean, they're illegal.
I know, but they're, they're selling them, and it's, it's where children can get in, as opposed to a dispensary.
My point is, if you find bath salts for sale anywhere, that we need to tell the police, because they're illegal in Ohio since 2011, so.
And people are still being harmed.
Right, no, I agree.
It's like buying drugs on the street, they're illegal.
But bath salts, that, that shouldn't be an issue anymore, that, I mean, obviously, lots of illegal behavior still takes place, you know, we can't, can't stop that, but, so my, my point here, so the city does have to make a lot of decisions that would limit legitimate freedoms of others, and respectfully, I believe, part of what makes your job really difficult is having to weigh those rights against the impact that it has on the rest of the community. So even my right to, say, not take care of my property, or to have farm animals or something like that, is regulated by the city, it doesn't mean it's still not a right, but it's just not a right that I can exercise, you know, within city limits. So, I do think it's within the city's rights to weigh in on the dispensary issue without worrying that we are infringing on other people's freedoms. But with that said, I do think that a two-to-four-year moratorium is very reasonable, I have no complaint with that at all, and that if that's how council decides, I'm, you know, more than satisfied with that, so, but appreciate you, carry my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. To continue on miscellaneous, my only comment that I have is, I had hoped to see our nice little plaque from the fair board up, but I see that it hasn't made it to the wall yet, so, I guess, I guess we're working on roundabouts, so, no worries. All right, well, with that, Mr. Abernathy, any comments for us tonight?
Yeah, tough night when it comes to tripping all over myself and introducing legislation, so thank you for your patience on that. But powerful, powerful stuff from a couple of our residents when it comes to that roundabout, and it's very impactful, and I think that when the time comes that this comes before this council, we need to take this real serious. This is, this is different from the other roundabouts, this is impacting people's homes. And I know you guys are really passionate about these roundabouts, but I have to really, really consider what this is going to do to these people's homes, and this is not a slam dunk, so I just want to put that out there on the record for myself. So, with that, thank you for everybody who's spoken tonight, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Knappick? Ms. Knappich.
I'd also like to reiterate, I'm interested in learning about, more about this, the roundabouts, because it is very, very different from any that we've put in before. And I have to laugh because the only peanut shaped roundabout I've ever seen, I think it's in Oberlin, and you could literally just still drive straight through. It's that flat. And one is on one side of the road and one is on the other, which is the total mess. So I'll be interested to see what the design patterns are. I want to thank everybody who came tonight, the citizens who spoke, people who came to the committee meeting. I think it was, was very productive. I want to congratulate the city and the timber for doing a phenomenal job on Worcester Fest. The, the, the dog races were all over the internet because I was sending them to California and to Seattle and they were like, it was just pretty funny. And then finally, on a not so happy note, I would like, and I'm sure everyone would like, to send our condolences and our prayers out to the community in Norwaine, who had five of their student band members be in a horrific accident Saturday night. One young lady, 14 years old, did not make it and she passed away. But I wore my Norwaine Bobcat sweatshirt tonight because I think that we need to keep the, the community, it's so hard to lose anyone in your community, but a 14-year-old child is, is just devastating for everyone. So our hearts go out to the community in Norwaine.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey.
I just agree with the points made by Mr. Abernathy and Ms. Knappich regarding the roundabouts. I do think it's important to just really look at things from all sides and, and really consider the impact on the, on the local residents. And as Ms. Knappich said, just really keeping Norwaine in, in our thoughts and, and just really, heart goes out to them as, as they're working through this tragedy, for sure.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Warden.
I don't really have anything useful to add. I just would reiterate everything that you've all said tonight. And I think it's very important that, you know, in a time like this, that our community can pull together. So I hope that that's what we continue to do for these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malta.
Great conversation tonight. As always, I appreciate everybody coming, including the community, more than anything. And based on my encouragement, we will have more discussions with the roundabouts. All residents will be here at some point to give us their thoughts and opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Sanders. Yeah, I, I will, I'll be opposed, I can't imagine changing my mind and not being opposed to the roundabout. I wish the city administration would be a little less defensive and more open to discussing the fact that they might not be right about this and that there might be other, other ways to look at it. One of the issues that I saw, and I was in a long line of traffic going north on Burbank, a bus coming up Winkler. If there's a long line of traffic that doesn't have to stop, I'm not sure how a bus enters coming north on Winkler to get around to get to the high school. So that, that might not even be possible. They might have to go around a different direction because if there's no light, they're not going to have to pause. So I'd like to, like you said, consider all the options that might be available, including,